Welcome everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202201, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be held physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city council meetings by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item, number, or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the city council and kept on file as part of the official records of the council meetings. If you have any questions on how to attend virtually or encountering difficulties connecting to the meetings, please contact the city clerk at 209-646-4812 or by emailing the city clerk. Thank you and welcome everybody to our joint city council regular meeting and success for agency to this former series redevelopment agency and successor agency to the status all serious redevelopment commissions meeting today, Monday, January 24, 2022. Now call this a meeting to order. Can we please get the roll call, please?
Council and agency member Casey.
Here.
Council and agency member Rhino. Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Silveira.
There.
Council and agency member Klein.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Lopez.
Here. Please stand invocation by Pastor Patrick Davis, Serious Christian Center.
Hi, thanks, everybody for joining. Thank you all for doing all the things you do for the city of Series. Praying for God's blessing on your lives. Psalm 37, 3 says, "Trust in the Lord and do good. Dwell in the land, befriend faithfulness." If we could all bow our heads and pray. God Almighty, we invite your presence to be with all the members of the city council and with everyone who is in attendance in person and online. God, we pray that you would provide guidance as they make meaningful decisions concerning the community. Grant our Father energy, wisdom, and peace this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution 2007, 106 for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber's door. If we can begin with any comments on Zoom.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. If we can start with comments here on the dais, anybody that would like to speak.
Jeanne Aickley, Series. On January 18th, excuse me, on January 18th, it was coming up Laker Avenue, Laker Road, the Whitmore on the right-hand corner, the southeast corner, not the southwest, southeast corner. There was an event going on there. And it was very strange. It wasn't, didn't seem, it seemed out of place. And so I contacted council member Linda Rhino. And I wrote her a message and I said, is this acceptable? Can you do that? And she goes, I don't know. She goes, I'll check into it. Monday is a holiday. There won't be anybody there, so hopefully we can get a, an answer on Tuesday. So on that Tuesday, she received an email from Christopher Holm, from the Community Development Director. And he wrote to council member Rhino. He said, we found it not permitted and that it is in violation of section 509040 and 509080 of the municipal code. They need a special event permit for this type of land use. Code enforcement will be involved. If you look up there, you can see that people at home and Zoom, what goes on sometimes. And you would think something that big, people would, that conducted that would know the difference between you can and you can't. So I had closed so everybody could see the different requirements for the 5090-40. And it explains in there, in the event that a charitable solicitation, collection, or gratuity is involved, or food beverages or other merchandises to be sold, chapter 5-02 shall be implied with prior to issuance of permit under the chapter. Then on 509080, it goes down and explains all these different things that you have to comply with to get permission to do that. And that means you have to come to the city to see if you can do the right thing and, and have your event upheld to where you can do it. So that was pretty much on the, the 16th and 18th. When Christopher Holm gave Linda Rhino the answer. On the 21st, somehow I got this email, probably somebody pushed the wrong button. But it was addressed to the city manager, Chief Collins, Mr. Councilmember Sever, Councilmember Casey, Councilmember Klein, and Councilmember Linda Rhino. And it says, this is from Javier Lopez, our mayor. A mayor that the people chose. And then there it says, gentlemen, let's be clear. And I assume he's, this is addressed to John Patty. And I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, but correct me if I'm not, that the other person they're talking about is myself. So the letter says, or the email, gentlemen, let's be clear. In no shape or form will I continue to allow you, gentlemen, to disrupt my city staff with your comments. In addition, in this matter at hand in which you both seem to believe you are the only priority, regardless if it's a pop event, local business, or whom I support, the real evidence only shows how negative and anti-small business you are. In the end, I also support freedom of speech and the right to have an opinion. These are yours. Our city council and city staff work day and day out to move this city forward. I'd suggest you be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Thank you and have a blessed day, Javier Lopez, Mayor. Wow, that's a lot to take in. So what I'm reading here is that I'm supposed to be kind of silenced for my opinion. And you write, write down in there that I also support freedom of speech and the right to have an opinion. But before that, it's just the opposite. I'm not allowed to have an opinion. And to tell you the truth, I don't know about a couple of you people on the city council. I know Mike Klein and Linda Rhino. And they could probably speak if they want to, or if you let them. There hasn't been any time that I've come up here to anyone in the city, anyone outside the city that I've made contact with, whether it be the local binding department, public works. I've made contact with just about every department in the city. I've never done anything to disrespect the city staff, not once. And I'll tell you, sometime back before your reign, Mayor Silveira said, and so did the chief of police. He said that they would like people to be proactive on theirself, the citizen. If you see something, tell somebody. That's what I have done. I exercised my right to say something. Now I'm being told in one form or another that I'm supposed to be silenced and I, my opinion doesn't count at all. And again, I have disrespected no one. And you, you've done that to myself. You've done to that, that gentleman behind me. And if any of you speak up, I'd be surprised. But I hope you do to let the people in the city know that this is wrong.
Thank you. I stand by that statement. Number one, if I ask you to stop disrespecting the staff as I had done here on the dais, I would appreciate if you would continue, would not continue that. And no, you're not going to speak again. You've had your time. But anyways, we'll move forward. Anybody else wants to speak? Step up.
Good evening, Council. John Warren, City of Series. I would like to know how you folks feel that you are disrespected. That's a question. How were you disrespected? Is there going to be an answer?
Mr. Ms. Rhino, go ahead.
Are you asking all of us if we feel that what the mayor said is from us or just from the mayor?
But the mayor wrote it.
Well, I can't speak for the mayor. I can say that when I read it, I don't feel I've been disrespected. I think that me disrespect is if you stand there and you yell and cuss at me, that's disrespectful. I think a citizen that comes forward that feels they need to continue asking the same question over because they're not getting an answer. I think that every citizen's right. And I don't have a problem with that. I don't have someone coming before me, even putting me on the spot if they've asked me to do something and I haven't done it. And that's on me and shame on me if I haven't taken care of the problem that someone has come forward to me and asked about. But someone coming and asking over and over, they just want an answer because it's never answered. I personally don't have a problem with that. And if you're not yelling at me, if you're not cussing at me, it's all good. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come on up.
I'm back. I am the one.
Could you move the microphone down just a little bit? There you go.
I am the one that come several weeks ago about a problem on 10th Street that had to do with buildings and being built and keep being built. And I, since I've been here, it's gotten worse. And I had said at that time, if things did not, somebody needs to go look at what's going on there. He's now building onto another house next door. We did not buy our house for multiple dwellings. We bought our house where we could live there in peace. And we're not getting it. They park all over the place. You don't have a parking place. There, it is just, it's like it's funny to him. It's, it, his things is, well, that's okay. I've got to know people's names. You know, I, I, I am not doing it. Somebody else is doing it. But he has names on some of it and that's his property. But we need to, and I had mentioned about the fire. That is going to happen if people do not look up and see that that place is nothing but a fire trap. But landlord said, you know, I do this because I really want people to have a place. I said, no, you don't. You do this for the money. I said, that's the only reason you're doing it. Don't. But we are tired of having to live across from an area that's being built up and nobody doing anything. And if you're doing something and do something, please let us know that it's being taken care of. I mean, it just can't keep going. Got people was moving out of the neighborhood. It's been there 20 years or better. I have been there almost 30. And I have even thought about it myself. But I like our state, our town. I've always loved Series. And so I want to stay here. But if you guys can't do what is right to do with that situation over there, going to have a whole lot of problems. He does, was left with a, they told me I had to have, I probably already had my five minutes. They told him he had to have a cesspool, okay? For a, a, a house that's right there. And that people stood there and watched him do that. You know, he built the cesspool and the whole bit. Well, when they left, the inspectors and the things left, he went and covered it all up because he wanted it to come out of one. Wanted it and guys, we need help. We need help on 10th Street to be, because that hasn't been a, we've never had problems until this started happening. So please give us help.
Ma'am, if you can please.
Him.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Ma'am, if you could, please, because I don't know if that mic was on or, or anything. Could you please give your contact information to the city clerk? And then I'll make contact with you and I'll follow up. And I'll talk to the city manager and see, you know, what's going on in 10th Street.
That's, that would be great.
Would you please?
Yes, my name is, did I do the name?
So I will make contact to you.
Yes.
I'll tell you, I'll do it by Wednesday.
Okay.
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 So if you can just give her your contact information, phone number, email, either way you would like to be contacted.
Okay. We just, I mean, I love the people. I do love the people that even have it. Neighbors, they lived there for a long time, but they started building there before they left. But now they're living, moving, they are building again on the other side of them. I mean, it's, it's unreal. My thing is, you know what? If it's adults in there, okay. But you've got babies and you've got little kids in there. And those little kids cannot fend for themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for following up. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else? Come on up.
And my name is Tracy Pert. I also, this is my mom and I am just following through with what she asked me to come. I've lived on 10th Street, across the street from her for 27 years. I've lived here in Series just about all my life. Matter of fact, I met my husband at Series High School as a freshman. He was a junior. Never do we have any issues living on 10th Street. Matter of fact, my house was a magnet for everybody to come and enjoy. I've had the police department there, the fire department there. I've had my Socrates there. I've had my church and every outreach you could think of in Series that could wanted to come and join my home. They were welcome. There's many times that people just came, just as, can we go swimming? I don't even know these people, but yes, you're welcome at my home. The neighbor next door came, he moved in. We loved having him. He was there about 20 years. He moved, the minute he moved, he turned the whole place upside down. We have done everything in our power to try to get help for it for the last four or five years. He built on a mother-in-law's quarter. Said it was for his mother-in-law. Never, I'm never moved in. He started renting it immediately. He bought the property next door as soon as it came available from a cop that lived there. He immediately turned the back garage into a two-bedroom house. Nobody, we called, we've called the city so many times. We've came down here so many times saying, this is being done without permits. This is being done. We still just kept going. Well, then it got to a point where it got so bad that he moved out himself because it got so bad. Rented the front part of his house to a bunch of people, a ton of people and a bunch of more gang members. They spray painted graffiti all over our sidewalks, all over everywhere. Troy Slayball had to come in and clean all the graffiti. It got so bad. We have done everything in our power. We've called the cops so many times. They've came out and been so gracious to go next door. You came and parked in your driveway. They parked sideways up in your driveway. So you can't even get in your own driveway. You got 20 something people living there now, over 20 something people. I witnessed it myself, a U-Haul truck pull up and people get out. You think it's furniture? No, it was people. It was full of people in this U-Haul truck. They all got out, went inside that house. It was next door to where I lived. Sad to say, I finally put my home up for sale. It made me sick and I cried for days because I love Series. And I moved out of Series to get away from it. That's how bad it got. And it made me sick because we did everything in our power to try to get help from you guys. And nobody, nobody would call us back. Nobody would come over there and look at the mess that we were living in. It made me sick to have to sell my home and move out of a city that I loved. My mom has lived her whole life. This is another neighbor that has lived there her whole life. Just about all of us have given everything to take care of Series. We will, we will give 110%. But when we stand up here and ask for help and don't get it, that's sad. That's sad. Right now, that place is a living mess over there. They have little bitty kids living in there. They can't speak English and we don't know what's going on. We know it's horrid though. It's bad for these little kids. I don't, we can't even count the people that live in that house. He's now built again two duplexes onto that house. So now not only does he have his house, a mother-in-law's quarter, he has four rentals on that property. And on the other one, which should only be single dwelling homes, he has two more. And I lived right next door to him. He builds it so close that the air conditioner is sitting on top of the, on top of the fence, on the fence that would be in my fence. They, this, you could hear, and the fire department needs to know this and they need to do something about it. You could hear that electricity sizzling, sizzling because it's going to all of those homes.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you. We're having an issue on Zoom. We have to pause the meeting. We'll hold your time and we'll make sure that we get in contact with you guys. And Mike will follow up as he said.
No problem.
This is the first time that I've heard about this. So we'll, we'll make sure that we follow.
Thank, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. We're going to have to take a small recess. We're having issues with the audio on Zoom. So we're going to go into a five-minute recess. More. And Don Pedro. Thank you, council member. Go ahead.
Mr. Royal, is all of Moore Road in the city or is the county?
Do you know if it's in? Thank you.
More road, half of the road, the what side is the city and the east is the county?
Okay.
So can we ask that gentleman, the issue is, is it down the center?
Oh yeah, would you step right up real quick? We just want to make sure that, uh, do you know if you were traveling on the county side or on the series side?
That's, that's a good question, Your Honor. Um, I'm not really sure, uh, because the road literally from, you know, they did the whole repave, repaving, redo the whole thing on Whitmore. But then as soon as you turn onto Moore Road from Whitmore Avenue, and you know, about maybe um, a quarter of a mile, it's just the old road. And there's no striping, or if there is, it's very, very light. You can't see it. But then about, like I said, halfway down, all of a sudden, the road becomes very nice. They've got bright double yellow lines that tell you not to pass, uh, which people do anyway. But anyway, it just stops and I don't understand why only half of the road was completed in the other half. I mean, literally all the way down to um, road, road has been redone by the county, I guess. So maybe that, just that one thousand yards or something is the city? And that's why they didn't do it? I have no idea.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that and make sure, right? We'll get back to you. We'll get your information.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, counsel.
Well, thank you.
So much.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come on up, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Steve Holloway. I'm general manager for Bertolotti Disposal. And I'd like to give you an update on the garbage totter delivery and the three can system that has started January 1st. Uh, all the garbage totters have been delivered. And the three can system has been started as of the first intent, as intended.
Oh, could you please move the microphone just a little bit closer to you if possible?
Um, with any delivery of this magnitude, um, there's bound to be some glitches. Uh, we're currently working on to correct missed deliveries and double deliveries that have happened. And if anyone doesn't have a black can or didn't get delivered, please give us a call at five three seven eight thousand. As far as the collection of the can system, your, your collection times could run as late as four or five o'clock. I mean, this could cause problems. Uh, most people are uh, used to having their garbage dumped by ten o'clock per se. That might run four or five. Um, part of that is due to the pandemic. Um, we had trucks on order over a year ago that we have not seen. Um, so we're having to dump the additional twelve thousand cans with the same trucks that we're using now. Um, so we're having to double team those trucks, uh, so they're out there longer. So um, we ask that you be patient during this transition time. Um, and as soon as our new trucks arrive, I think that the collection times will come down to what they were in the normal prior to this. Um, but dur- during this, we're, I mean, we, we've done our best. We ordered, like I said, uh, over a year ago and we're still running into the issues. We're supposed to be receiving our trucks this last week of January, four more in February and one in March. So, you know, if, if anyone doesn't have the, the number of cans that there, you should have three cans, uh, black, green, blue, um, let, let us know if you don't. Um, there was a major, I mean, twelve thousand cans went out in about three weeks, three and a half weeks during December there. Um, and just like everyone else is continuing with our delivery service, was continuing with dropouts and uh, and people getting sick, uh, in addition to our drivers and everything else. So we are working as hard as we can to get, get the um, the, you know, missed, missed deliveries done. Um, in addition to our, our main concentration is collecting all the cans during the week.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate you updating the public and working with the city to get some of these issues resolved. And like you said, this is a transitional period and we'll do our best to work with you and hope our citizens can remain patient. And if they do need information, contact you, like you said, correct? That would be great. All right, well, thank you very much. Any other members of the public? Seeing none? Did we receive any emails?
No emails, but there is one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that.
EX Gaming, I have unmuted your mic.
Hi, hello, good evening, y'all. Um, my name is Maria and um, my issue is, well, when I take my son to school in the morning and bring him back home, that's when the traffic gets really bad. Um, but I'm wondering, it's taking like, takes people like a long time just to drop off their child at um, the Central Valley High School because of Service Road, um, the traffic, the new Walmart, you know? We all knew that with Walmart, there would be more traffic. Um, and I was getting ready for that, but um, sometimes, you know, people have to get to work. Um, good thing I'm not working right now, but it's, are we gonna expand that bridge? Are we gonna do something with that bridge on Service Road?
That is our plans.
That is your plan? Do you know, um, do you know like around when?
Uh, we don't have that definite answer at the moment. It could be quite a while. But just, just to sure that we do have plans on to reveal.
Well, you guys are planning, okay?
We do, yes. Oh, it's definitely, yes.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, I was thinking, you know, stop lights and everything because it's so dangerous. People just, oh, you guys, one day, just try it out around seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and then around two thirty, three o'clock and see how bad it is, you know? Hopefully, like that traffic. Um, thank you very much.
Appreciate the call. Thank you. Oh, no more Zoom?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so now we're in citizens communication. Moving on, is there any conflicts of interest? Okay, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine of nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon a single rule of vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like a consent item pool for further discussion? Seeing none? Is there any members of the public that want to pull an item on the agenda today? Seeing none? Can we get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve uh, items one, two, three, A, four, five, A and B. Second.
Roll call.
Council and agency member Casey.
Aye.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes. Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Silveira.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Fair Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passive, five zero.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to a public hearing, item number six, public hearing to consider resolution number twenty twenty-two zero-two approving a Whitmore Ranch specific plan reimbursement fee. Christopher Home to present the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to pull up a map to help us see where this is at. Uh, north is oriented toward the left on this map. This is Whitmore Avenue and I'm going to share this on Zoom so that people can see it from home. Okay. So this is fifty-five point three acres. That was uh, annexed in twenty nineteen into the city. Grant Alvernas and um, and the Alvernas Enterprises or the proponent group, they paid over four hundred thousand dollars to an environmental consultant um, agency to help them with an environmental impact report, um, specific plan and the uh, the annexation documents that brought these fifty-five plus acres into the city with a specific plan. And um, basically upgraded their zoning to allow for more development. Uh, due to the benefit that the other properties in this area received from this, uh, they're, uh, the proponent group is asking for a reimbursement fee program. Um, this would uh, consist of, of a fee that would be paid by uh, each develop, each uh, property owner at the time of development of subdivision, uh, use permit or uh, any multifamily um, residences on their properties in this area. It only affects uh, twelve properties that were um, benefited by this annexation. And um, so this, the, the money would basically be paid as a fee to the city and we will um, reimburse the uh, Alvernas Enterprises um, for what they spent to get this uh, to where it is now today. And uh, I can take any questions. We also have Grant Alvernas or Mr. Alvernas here. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start off with council member Klein.
First, I apologize staff for not asking the question prior to this. I did have it marked and I didn't do it, so I do apologize. But since Alvarez Enterprise started this equation a few years ago, why are they getting reimbursed at all?
Um, this is uh, something that's in our ordinance. It, it allows for the city council to approve a reimbursement program. Um, the, the benefit that these other property owners are getting from having their properties annexed and basically upzoned, um, significantly can improve the value of their properties. And since the cost of, of the um, of the documents that were, were put into place to allow this to even happen, were uh, shouldered by the Alvernas Enterprises, uh, that's why they're asking for their neighbors to, to pitch in since their neighbors were also benefited. There's precedent here as, as well with the West Landing annexation. Uh, the city council did the same thing for um, the West Landing annexation. There's a, there's a reimbursement fee program in that case as well.
But the city would not have undertaken this if Alvernas did not come before the council and to get this rezoned, to get all the parcel, parcels and stuff set in place. So I can understand the other property owners, you know, reimbursement, because you know, even a few of those don't want to be annexed in and don't want the development done. But you got, you know, a hundred and forty-three thousand going back to the Alvernas Enterprise.
Yeah, I, I um, I, I was um, questioning about that as well. So I, I invited the property owners to come to a neighborhood meeting hosted here and I sent them all uh, letters and no one showed up to the meeting. Um, I did get one phone call from a property owner that had some questions. Um, I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but after talking with them, they said that they might not come tonight, that they, um, it seemed like their, their questions had been answered. But um, again, I'm not sure if anyone's here to speak on this matter.
So is this project gonna move forward?
Only if the city council wills it and um, depending on also if there's, if there's any public feedback um, here tonight that you'd like to hear. Is the project moving forward? As in the, the Whitmore Ranch specific plan is, is in place, yes. So the, the plan's in place, the, the area has been annexed and the um, the environmental impact report's already done. So everything's done. It happened in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. This is uh, so, so that the Alvernas Enterprises can get reimbursed for um, shouldering the cost of those uh, documents that benefited the neighborhood.
Council member Rhino?
I know that, I know that we've done that in the past and I don't have any problem with the property owner that steps out there and takes the risk of spending all their own money to get a project forward. And anybody that wants to be part of that development should be paying their fair share to the Alvernas. I just want to be sure though, after what council member Klein brought up, that there are no city funds expended.
That's correct. There are no city funds expended.
Right, and this is all money that the Alvernas family has, has put up front and they just want to get reimbursed for the money that they've put into the project. I understand that. I have no problem with that. I do have a question though on the administrative fee of a hundred dollars. That would be per acre or per parcel or?
It's, since it's a one-time fee, um, and there are only twelve properties involved, the city staff felt like in order to find a more um, qualified amount, we would need to do a study. And given the small number of properties, it wouldn't be feasible to do that. It would cost more for, for city staff to take the time to do that study just for this. We are looking though at having the study done in a more broad sense. It would cover a lot more uh, of the fees that people pay for lots of different things in the city. And when that happens, we'll have a better idea and we can, we can update this fee in particular at when we do that bulk study. In particular, at when we do that bulk study.
Oh. Anticipated based on this hundred dollar, I'm not sure who all and. Call on city staff will be. Involved in taking this reimbursement money. Is it just finance and it is the does the money come into us and then? We we dole it out or how does that work?
Uh, we didn't do a full study like I like I mentioned, but we did a rough estimate. Uh, the building permit technician will. Uh, be the 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 point of contact for the person that's paying this fee. There's some record keeping involved. And uh multiple people in the finance department will be checking this and making sure that the check is sent and. Uh, it's reimbursed. So, given the. Reasonably small amounts of time that multiple people have to work on this on the staff level. We felt that one hundred dollars was uh sufficient and and not too much, not too little, but. We we're guessing that 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 whenever the fee study happens, that that's close to what it will end up being anyway.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Home.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? Okay, any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Any members on Zoom?
There is one hand raised on Zoom. EX Gaming, I will unmute your mic.
My question is regarding. This new construction you guys want to work on East Whitmore. Is that by the? What's the name of that school? Out there on East Whitmore, Caesar Chavez. Is it that big old open area there that you guys are talking about?
Yes, this area is surrounded by Moore Road, Whitmore Avenue and uh the school that you mentioned.
Okay, okay, and there's only twelve properties involved that it might affect. Correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you that you answered my question.
Thank you, Maria. Any more hands raised on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
There any emails?
No, we did not have any emails.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do we need to take an act any action on this? Okay.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council and agency member Casey.
Aye.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Silveira.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Item number seven. Resolution number twenty twenty-two zero-three approving the formation of veterans in a in an active military banner program advisory committee. Uh, this committee is an advisory committee on how the banner program will look. We had postponed this program so that way we can allow time for certain members of the community to apply. Uh, do you have Christine the list of the members of community applied online?
We had the original four that applied in the beginning.
So appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so here is the members that applied online. We have Sergeant King of Turlock US Army Recruiter's Office. We have Freddie Morales of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Pete Sametago, American Legion Commander, Gene Yackley, Veterans of Series Resident, John Warren, and. Last time we spoke, we were going to have Councilmember Jim Casey and a Siri staff member. So this is pretty much the list that we have now. So what I'm gonna do is. See if there's any members on this list that are here present today or you gentlemen would like to. Uh, walk up to this podium, please. I have uh Gene Yackley step up first, please. Want to make sure that that you got word from anybody else that make sure that this is plenty of time. For anybody else that might not be on this list that we're trying to join this committee. That you might have heard.
I think that. I think that's up to the council, you know, I mean, maybe these uh. Organizations might need a little bit more time. I don't know. But uh.
I just wanted to make sure if you haven't heard anybody say that they wanted to be on the committee and that this was not enough time.
No, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Has has there been any response to the city itself about they need more time?
I don't believe we had any emails in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. So with this list, uh, council or if you guys are ready, we can, unless there's any questions, Councilmember Rhino, go ahead.
Um, the only thing I noticed is that in our packet, there's. Application by Nicholas Otero. I don't see his name. Listed on the resolution to be appointed, so I would, unless. Deputy City Clerk has heard he no longer wishes to be part of the committee, but. We have his resume here and I'd like to have his number seven on the resolution.
Okay, I just went ahead and jot his name down. Okay, council, is there any other questions? Okay. Motion to approve the following members to the Active Military Veterans Banner Program Committee. The ones that I had just listed before. Make it a second. Roll call.
Council and agent.
Hold on, just one second, Christina, go ahead.
I just want to be sure that Mr. Otero did on that.
Yeah, Nicholas is right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Roll call now.
Okay, council and agency member Casey.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Silveira.
Yes.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much, council. Moving on to an item number eight, resolution number twenty twenty-one zero-one appropriating two thousand five hundred from former city of series redevelopment agency, CRA. Administrative allowance and amending the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two CRA successor agency annual budget to remit. Payment on opportunity status laws and approving a memorandum. Memoriam to understand and authorize the city manager to execute MOU with OS. Leave that to you, Home.
Alright. Um, this is a uh an agreement that would be between the city, well, between the, yes, between the city and and. Opportunity Stanislas. It's not uh the the funds here are not coming out of the the general fund. Um, it's from redevelopment um funds from the successor agencies. Split uh between the two of them half and half. Uh, the the agencies spent twenty thousand dollars in um July. Of last year uh for for the one year. And now uh uh opportunity Stanislas is asking for an additional five thousand uh to bring us up to twenty-five thousand. A lot of other cities have um. Been asked similarly uh because of the uh new initiatives. That opportunity Stan Stanislas uh is bringing to the table and we have David White here. Um, to give a presentation um and you can answer some questions as well. This is a just from the sta- a staff perspective, an important part of our economic development, so we're excited to to. Um, present this to you and I have a a presentation that if you'd like to come up.
David, please step up.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, it's wonderful to be here. Thank you for inviting me and thank you for taking up our measure. So the reason why we uh asked for an increase is that uh we had a new campaign that started this year and. We all we also know that the cities, they go through their budgetary process of May and June. And so that was and the campaign followed after the budgetary process. So what we told the cities at the time is we will go ahead and send our m- our invoice for. The normal amount for this year, but keep in mind that we're gonna come back and ask for an adjustment to your budget. Which is what we've done with all nine cities and the county. Uh, the city of Modesto, city of series are the two uh cities that have not yet. Well, tonight we're bringing this to council of city series and on February eighth, we'll we'll bring the uh issue to the city of Modesto. Uh, as Mr. Holmes said, all the cities up to this point, we we modified our um MOU levels with the cities. To account for new uh for the new initiatives that we're going to undertake. Also, as everybody knows, things are getting more expensive, our staff. And we we've had, we've had to increase our budget to accommodate inflationary type uh. Uh pressures on our staff and on our organization. When I came here in August twenty thirteen, uh organization used to be called the Stanislas Economic Development and Workforce Alliance. You'll know that word alliance. And at the time, the organization was a quasi-public-private organization. We were co-located with the county. In the city-county building. We had a brown act board, which was led by the public sector. We had um all public disclosure. The organization on paper, that looks really good, but the challenge we had is we didn't have a lot of. A private enterprise really engaged in the organization. And in my thirty-five years plus experience around the country. Working in economic development, I recognize that as a problem. If you're going to get things done in economic development. You need to have the public and the private sector working together. And so a lot of companies like Bronco Wine and and Inja Gala Winery and others were not really at the table. Supporting our economic development initiatives. And so we undertook a course to to change that. To make sure that we had private sector support in the organization along with the public sector support. So in twenty sixteen, we launched our brand new campaign. I'd been here for for about two years. We had a previous uh campaign that we. Had undertaken, so we had to wait for that to uh transition out. And then in twenty sixteen, we started a new campaign. And part of that campaign was to leave the county office to separate ourselves from the county. Become a five-one C-three operation and and to change our board constitution so that we can invite the pub- the private sector. To be much more engaged in the organization. Uh, at that time, we had about thirty private sector investors in the organization. Now we have over a hundred private sector investors in the organization. And in that twenty sixteen campaign and plan. We undertook a lot of new initiatives that we had never done before. Uh, for example, you may have heard about Volt Institute. Old Institute is an advanced manufacturing training center where we've had twenty-one series residents go through the training. Get really good jobs where they're making twenty thousand dollars more on average. Uh, in the private sector, working for companies like Bronco and and Gala and other and smaller companies too. That was one initiative that we uh undertook in the last campaign. Another was to. Uh, take a much more aggressive effort to solve some of the workforce issues that we have here locally. And then finally, we also decided to undertake a much more direct approach to attracting businesses to the county. And I'm very happy to say that we've been very successful. In fact, uh, you've probably heard about the Amazon project that landed in Turlock and we were. Part of that, this bringing a thousand jobs to the area uh that located in Turlock, but obviously they're gonna hire a lot of people from series. And these will be jobs making eighteen, nineteen dollars an hour and more plus benefits. So um we're very excited about the past, what we've been able to achieve. Um, our board is made up of. Who's who among business and our local economy. The chairman of our board is Dylan Alvera from uh Beard Land CEO. The vice chairman of our board is Dan Leonard, who's a CFO for Bronco Winery. And so we're getting very. Uh talented and very influential people on our board of directors. In this new campaign, we're undertaking five initiatives. We had our our friend uh here, Mike Fred Michelson, the back is our consultant. I've worked with Fred for um fifteen years. And uh he's helped us to develop this plan and this campaign. And Fred, the very first thing we do whenever we in institute a new campaign is we go out and do private interviews. We. We undertook over or close to a hundred interviews, ninety-seven to be exact, of elected officials, of business leaders and others. To determine from them what has been our um success. What do you want opportunity Stanislas to work on in the future? And did you receive any direct return on investment for your investment? And seventy-five percent of all the respondents said that, yes, they had received ROI. And. In their experience, working a hundred economic development plans around the country and their experience at strategic solutions. This is the very highest they've ever seen. So we were doing something right. And I think with Volt Institute and with the businesses that we've attracted. And now going forward in the next campaign. So I think all of you have received our case statement. Which is entitled Opportunity Stanislas Next Level Together. And one of the things that they told us, if you. Uh, when you turn to page, uh, Christopher, you turn to the. Let's go to Volt Institute, page eight, which is, there you go. I see Trent Mayo there, who's the CEO at um at um Pacific Southwest Container. Volt Institute has been a tremendous asset in our community. We've we've already graduated a hundred students. They're with a ninety-seven percent placement rate. They they're landing jobs in industry that they never could have achieved before. Sixty-five percent of our students are low income. Sixty-five percent of our students are Latino, which is great. And we're trying to reach underserved communities and markets. And so, like I said, they're they're making twenty thousand dollars more than the job they had before they went into Volt Institute. Uh, we had a young lady come to our event so that we had last December. She was uh working in McDonald's, making minimum wage. She got fed up with her job. She heard about Volt. She's a single mom, two children. Her name's Jennifer Flowers. She came through, she graduated early. She got a job making seventy percent more income than what she was making at McDonald's. With benefits, with a 401K program. Right now, employers cannot find people. They cannot hire. And there especially the jobs that are hard to fill are the ones that require a lot of training and uh and kind of experience. And so that's what we're doing at Volt. And one thing that we're adding this next go-around is we're going to expand it. We now have a mechatronics program. Where they're learning all about robots and all how to take care of them, all about automation, process controls. We're adding a program called Volt on the Go, which will be a mobile version of Volt that we can bring down to series. And we can take out to Los Bonos and other places that are underserved where they can get training. Uh, trying to get people to come to Modesto right now for training is hard when you have to pay four and a half dollars a gallon for gas. And so we're trying to take the training to them. So that's what we're doing with Volt. The next one. Lead business-driven talent development. In the last three years, we've undertook and led an effort called uh strategic initiatives and. And uh sector strategies where we've asked multiple employers, what are the things that keep you up at night, the challenges you have with employment? Now, we all know that hard skills are very important, learning the things they learn at Volt. But we also learned that soft skills are extremely important. Having boys show up to work on time, being able to communicate, being able to be on a team, getting off your phone, just basic stuff. And so we're undertaking a a soft skills academy that'll be a certificated program, working with the Stanislas County Office of Education. To teach those important soft skills, but not just that, but also lean and and Six Sigma and some of the industry standards. We also learned that we have a lot of employers that are still acting like it's the nineteen seventies. They haven't changed their workforce practices. Now, everybody here knows what's the definition of insanity? It's doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. We have HR managers that need to understand that with the pandemic and with the changing times, you can't operate your business. Your HR the way you used to. So we have a program called Rising Tides, which will teach the best practices. On workforce development, how to retain, recruit and retain talent, so that you're not losing somebody after a year that you can keep them on board. So that's uh under leading business driven talent development. The third one, eh, improve economic vitality in the county. One thing we've learned, when we talked to the hospitals, we talked to Gallos and the other big companies, is it's really hard to attract talent to this area from outside. Talent, people with degrees, for example. They can punch their ticket anywhere. They can go to the Bay Area, they can go to Southern California. And so in order to attract that level of talent, you need to have a quality community. You need to have good schools. You need to have things for people to do. And uh the Gala Center is a great uh asset, but we need more. And so we're actually leading a couple of very important initiatives. Right now that will make a difference. And we want to bring something to series. We're working on something intangible, intangible that. Will uh be a game changer in series. Right now, we're leading an effort to bring a new ballpark for the Modesto Nuts in downtown Modesto. Now, just doing, we're just betting it right now. We have to make sure that it's doable. We have to make sure there's public support and we have to find a way to pay for it. That's not going to hamper the city of Modesto's coppers. So uh but these are the type of projects that will really revitalize the downtown. And make it a very attractive place to be. In addition to that, we are attracting uh much higher paying jobs. I'm pleased to say that we're working very closely with a Silicon Valley company. With which is uh potentially going to bring a thousand jobs to our community. This is an advanced manufacturer. These are jobs that pay. You know, thirty dollars an hour plus benefits. And we're working with that company right now to try to locate them in this county. And we've had some successes. We had a company that would just located right before the pandemic uh called S2A Modular. They're in the. Uh, they they make and design high-end homes that are totally, almost totally off the grid, very sustainable. That uh you can actually go to the site and. that you can actually go to the site and you can design your own home, and they make it right there in the plant. And the company that's from Silicon Valley, that just located in Patterson, three hundred new jobs. So moving on to the next one, grow local business. We operate and are host to the Valley Sierra Small Business Development Center. SPDCs around the country are funded by the SBA partially, and they're also funded by our organization. And the SPDC, their job is to help entrepreneurs, to help small business gain the technical experience and the help they need to be a thriving business. You can imagine how busy we were during the pandemic. Just we would get phone calls from people crying on the phone because they were going to lose their restaurant. And so we went to work very dedicatedly here locally in this county and helped thousands of small businesses stay afloat, helped identify and direct them to PPP loans and idle loans, and helped give them technical assistance that would help them stay active and afloat. And we helped multiple companies from series. We led a total of six grant programs throughout the county for several cities, Turlock, Patterson, Newman, Riverbank, Oakdale, where we we manage their small grant program. We have the expertise to do that. We put it together. We managed it. We did all the, all the onboarding and everything. I noticed that you have an item on here to talk about how to use your ARPA funds. Well, you may want to consider something for small business with those ARPA funds. So we're here to help. And we'll continue to provide excellent SPDC technical experience with over thirty-five consultants now. And we even have consultants that speak Farsi and Punjabi and Spanish and all the other languages to make sure that we're providing the training in there. Talking too loudly. I'll back up. And then finally, the brand-new initiative that we're very excited about, we weren't able to do this five years ago because we frankly didn't have the support of the business community. But now we're going to be leading public policy initiatives. We are now aligned very closely with the Bay Area, with the Bay Area Council, with a group called the Bay Area Mega Regional Alliance. And we're working with them on policy issues, on things that are coming from Sacramento and from Washington, to try to improve the business climate in our state, but also in our region. And we have a brand-new CEO roundtable that we formed that made up of C-level executives from our largest companies. We're going to use them and their influence to get really good public policy initiatives passed. You may have an initiative here in the city of series. Maybe it's something about water. Maybe it's something about schools. I don't know, but you may want to come to the CEO roundtable to present and get our support and our approval. Having business behind whatever you're trying to achieve is very valuable as you go forward with policy. So there's a lot going on. It takes money. It takes time and talent. And we've asked everybody to to really up their level of support. I'm proud to say that we are almost at goal. We're at ninety-nine percent of goal. And if the series, series, not to put any pressure on you, that's not in my intent, but you guys will put us over the top. And we'll we'll celebrate that. We're very excited. We've had a lot of companies double up from their previous investment because they recognize return on investment that our organization gives. We've had several cities double up what they were doing before. I sent some details to Christopher about ROI that we've delivered to the city of series that I'm sure that you've been able to see, and I don't want to stop talking now and answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilmember Klein?
Well, first off, Dwight, thank you very much. And I'm going to tell you just point-blank, you know, I was previously on the city council for ten, for nine years. I was not a big proponent of Opportunity Stanislas. I didn't feel that we got a bang for our buck. That whatever you did for the city of series and whatever you conveyed to our development director or the city manager at time did not come our way. So, you know, I had sent a bunch of stuff to Christopher and to the acne city manager, Alex, and questioned a lot of things in your city, your staff. I want to say Kim Whitcomb, Whitcomb, she answered some of my questions. And I was pleasantly surprised, let's put it that way. And, you know, even even the city manager knew that I told him, I'm not a big proponent of Opportunity Stanislas. I don't see where our citizens are benefited from it. I don't see where any of our businesses benefited from it. So with that being said, with what your staff has shared with with Christopher and things like that, I only have one concern. I think, you know, they've proven to me, and you've proven to me, that there is a viable thing for the city with what was responded to me. And I think I can, I can, I can get behind the additional. But I guess the part that bothers me is, you know, the MOU is a one-year, one-year thing. I was not here when it was last year, when it was taken under place. And all of a sudden, in quarter four, you're asking for more money. That's like being at a one-year lease, and nine months into your lease, you're asking for more money in your in your lease agreement. You know, I look at your your budget proposal, and it's it's like a five-hundred percent increase, if my numbers calculations are right. And it's like, everybody in city staff, the fire department, the police, they'd love to have a five-hundred percent increase in five years. You know, and I know that our five thousand dollars is small compared to that. But, you know, you look at that, I mean, it's very aggressive. But it just, it sort of takes me, it takes me back a little when you, when you look at that because I'm sure the police department and the fire department, public safety, would love to have those kind of increases. But again, like I said, you know, I, I, I could support this just because of what's, what staff has shared with us, what your staff has shared with us. And I hope in the future, our quarterly reports, we see the same progress. And I, and it gets conveyed down into the city council, so they can, they can, they can see the impact that it's made, you know. One of the questions I had here was, you know, your increase is, your biggest increase on on this proposal was to the Volt Institute, twenty-nine percent. Well, you answered, you answered my question, why the Volt? And 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 what it entailed, because I didn't know what it entailed. So, you know, I guess that twenty-nine percent is well worth increase because of what you're trying to do. So with that being said, I really don't have any questions. But going from somebody that's not supportive of Opportunity Stanislas, okay? I can support this. I just want to see the same kind of progress over the time. And the same kind of reporting. Who knows if I'm going to be here next year?
Very fair, very fair comments.
You know, but I, I just want to see the same progress that we can, we can, we can see in print, so we know we're getting our bang for our dollar.
Okay, very fair comments. So you've had quite a bit of turnover in the city of series. Not that I'm, you know, using that as a
You're absolutely right, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you are absolutely right. In the last year, not only we have a turnover on the city council, but we did in city staff.
Right.
And all we can do is go forward and not worry about what they did in the past.
Well, one thing we need to improve, and we know this, is our communications. And so I'll take that on personally, as, you know, my, my failing. But, you know, one thing that it's really important, I think, to understand, and any of you who have been in business or started a business would understand this. We took a model that was broken, and we revolutionized that model. We had to build the foundation. It doesn't happen overnight to get to where we are right now, where you have, you know, the kind of support we have, and we're starting to, if you ever read that book, Good to Great, it's getting the flywheel moving. And so the flywheel is moving now. We're better, we're in, we're in good shape to move forward. We do produce a quarterly report, which I have sent to the city of series. But you have a new city manager. You have a new community planning director, and so I, I understand that. But it'll, it'll get better, and I, you raise a valid point, and we recognize that, and we're doing something about it. The increase, just FYI, the increase is going from twenty thousand a year to twenty-five thousand a year. So it's not, I don't think that's a five-hundred percent increase. That's
No, I'm talking about your budget from one point eight to nine million.
Oh, no, nine million is over five years.
Right, but I mean, in five years, the chief, wouldn't you love to have a five percent increase over five years, five-hundred percent increase? You see, and that was my point. No, it's not, it's not the twenty, the five thousand dollars. It's your, your budget for your net, your, you know, your report here went from one point eight to nine million dollars, and that over the five-year course.
Let me clarify that. The last campaign, that's the campaign goal, nine million. The last campaign was five million. So it's not a five-hundred percent increase. It's, it's not even quite double. It's, so you're, the one point eight is an annual. That's our annual revenue. And so it's, we really went from one point four to one point eight. But, but that's due to the increase in our, in our initiatives. We're being asked to do two and a half more new initiatives that we haven't done before.
And I can understand what you're saying, and no disrespect, but, you know, with, with your campaign goal here, it doesn't have anything in there that was eight million or anything. It was one point eight to nine million. You know, and so I'm going off what, what is presented to me, so no disrespect to you, and please don't take it that way. But that's what I was looking at over the five-year period.
Well, we didn't communicate that properly then, and I apologize for that, but I just wanted to clarify that it's, we're going from one point four million to one point eight million in the new campaign. Annually.
That's good, David. Thank you very much. Any more questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple, question and a couple of comments. You, you talked about expenses going up, staffing, et cetera, at the five-one-C-three. Did you apply for, and did you receive CARES and ARPA Act funding to supplement exactly what you're talking about? Because that was there for all the five-one-C-threes in the area. Were you able to do that?
Well, yes and no. Yes, in that several cities have used their ARPA funds to cover the increase, but
I'm talking about you, Opportunity Stanislas, applying for those funds to supplement. Because you can hundred percent do that as a nonprofit, you could have. I just have a hard time passing those expenses on to the city when that much was available to Opportunity Stanislas, like it was to all the other nonprofits in the area, and most, most if not all were funded. I would probably have a hard time increasing the budget in any amount, and maybe even the original amount, until we can have a clear and concise report of exactly how it's benefiting our citizens right here in series. I know you sent an email with a few figures on it. That's probably not enough for me. I'd like to see something more detailed. And I don't know, the organization, to me, it seems like it really benefits big business, and that's great. And we have some very successful larger businesses in this area, and I know you work directly with them. You mentioned Bronco Winery, and I know you guys support Gala Winery a lot. The Stanislas twenty-thirty initiative is that you guys are a partner in is going to do a lot of exactly the same things you just mentioned. Your last three initiatives of talent improvement and grow are exactly the initiatives, initiatives that twenty-thirty has been being built on. But as a partner with the twenty-thirty initiative throughout the entire county, I just wonder why you would target initiatives that are going to, you're going to be included in on a broader spectrum. And I understand your, your organization is trying to help us figure out something to do with the old, like we all like to, like to come up with ideas. That's my concern. At this point, I wouldn't be able to support any more funding. And I would honestly look at the original funding until we can get some clear ideas of what, how it's impacting our specific citizens here in series, above and beyond certificates that they're getting, and a hundred people that have graduated Volt Institute. That's all I had.
Councilmember, Councilmember Casey.
I just wanted to compliment the, the organization. I know firsthand, they're able to help small businesses here in series. And really, the task isn't, the twenty-five thousand dollars that we're going to end up paying totally for this fiscal year, really, the burden comes back to us. You know, just because we're giving them the money, now we need to go and ask for assistance, and they will be able to help us. But we can't think for one moment that just giving them the money and us setting back and waiting for them to come to us. There's plenty of opportunities and questions that our council can ask, staff can ask. And again, firsthand information on my part, they're willing to help, and they can help. I support this a hundred percent.
Thank you, councilmember. Any more questions by the council? Any public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Now we move on to a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash oh one.
Second.
Call call.
Council and agency member Casey.
Aye.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Silveira.
No.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes for yes, one, no.
Thank you. Moving on to number nine, resolution number twenty-two-two oh one, SCRC appropriating the two thousand five hundred from former Stanislaw Series redevelopment commission, SCRC administrative allowance and amending the FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, two, Stanislaw Series accessory agency annual budget to remit the payment to Opportunity Stanislas. This is my understanding that this is basically an amendment to the budget.
Yes, this is the other half of the motion that you just made.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash. Well, it says oh one. Could it be, it used to be a different resolution number?
The resolution number is based on it being the Stanislaw Series redevelopment commission instead. It has its own number.
Okay, so move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash oh one, SCRC.
Second.
Call call.
Council and agency member Casey.
Aye.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Silveira.
No.
Council and agency member Klein.
Yes.
Mayor and Chair Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passes for yes, one.
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to discussion items. Item number ten, discussion and direction regarding the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds. Alex, I believe you have a report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the agenda has the finance director, but pretty disappointing, get me this. So the purpose of this agenda item is for the council to provide direction on the projects slash expenditures developed by city staff for potential ARPA funding. Based on the council direction this evening, we're proposing to come back at the next council meeting with an expenditure plan for council's consideration and formal adoption. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the presentation. Okay, next one.
Alex, real quick.
I have some general questions before we get into specifically. The we can use ten million for government loss of government revenue or something. We can use ten million of this, eleven point six.
That's correct.
Can we use any of the ARPA money to hire temporary employees to they go and kind of become a dump cleanup around the city? Can we use that for temporary employees to do that or not?
Yes, we could, and I, if there's a council interest in that, I would recommend contract temporary employees opposed to full-time permanent staff position.
Okay.
Linda, before you go on, because this might be related to what you're going to say. Several of us may have other ideas for this money, too, like what you're saying, too. Do you think it'd be appropriate to listen to your report first, and then come back and say we would like to see some areas that would maybe be different or some other thing?
I, I still believe I have general questions. I'm not, I'm not bringing up, well, that one I did bring up specifically.
Well, because I have a question kind of like yours, but I'm just wondering if it should wait till we see his
Well, okay, then I shouldn't have added temporary workers. I just should have asked if we could use Well, okay, then I shouldn't have added temporary workers. I just should have asked if we could use money to hire employees. That would have been a general.
That's not really what I'm talking about. I mean, but I'm saying let Alex do his presentation, then, then let's talk at length about it.
Another question. And, um, Ms. Diaz, can the city pay down debt or is that not allowed?
That's not allowed.
Okay. Um, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go back to those questions that you both have. I have a similar question. Go ahead, Alex. Continue.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, yes, next slide. Thank you, Christopher. Now to this line. So just to generate some general background, background on ARPA. Uh, in March twenty twenty-one, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan, uh, which established, uh, this funding. Um, and the intent of this funding is to help local governments, uh, like the city of Syracuse, uh, recover from the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, series is expected to, to receive eleven point six million dollars in federal funding as part of ARPA. Um, and the funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, and spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, the city received, uh, its first allocation of five point eight million dollars, July twenty twenty-one. Uh, the second install, excuse me, installment we received, July twenty. Hey. We'll try this mic. Uh, test, check, we okay? Uh, next slide, please, Christopher. Uh, so the, the Treasury Department has released its final rules. Um, long story short, a fairly flexible funding at the end of the day, uh, but there are some category where the funds can be used. Uh, that's, uh, replacing public sector revenue loss. Uh, funds for public health and economic impacts. Slide. Uh, providing funding for premium pay for essential workers. Uh, providing funding for investments in water, sewer, uh, and broadband infrastructure. Um, we do know there are some restrictions on, on the items that funding can be used for. Um, one of the items was raised by council member Rhino. We can, cannot use it to, uh, pay down debt service. Um, we cannot use it, uh, for a reduction in net revenue. Um, and we cannot use it to reduce a pension fund, fund, unfunded liability. So uh, fairly flexible, but the treasury has said we can use it for these particular items. Next slide, please, Christopher. So I'm, I'm just gonna jump right in, into, to the list of projects. The staff report uh, contains, uh, brief descriptions of all these items. Uh, didn't want to clutter up the slides on the slide deck, so I just have a, a one-liner of the project and the dollar amount in the presentation. So um, in regard to information technology, uh, upgrading, uh, the city's enterprise wireless infrastructure to an enterprise class system for fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, mobile data computers for patrol cars at sixty-five dollars. So, I mean, let me just back up a little bit. My, my, my thought was to just run through the entire list um, kind of at this level, um, and then take some direction from the council, again, at the pleasure of the council, but that's what the thought was.
That'll work out.
I'll just continue at this point. Uh, cradle point wireless connection, excuse me, for patrol cars at seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, moving on to, uh, requests for funding from the police department. A request for fixed and deployable license plate reader cameras. Uh, a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh, general public safety cameras to be deployed throughout the city. Um, at a hundred thousand dollars, uh, upgrading, uh, aging police department, public safety or public security, excuse me, building security system at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, upgrading the police officer's duty here storage room and the chief's briefing room uh, at forty thousand dollars, a critical incident response vehicle at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, continuing with police department requests, uh, speed trailers at fifty thousand dollars. Uh, covered parking, uh, and expansion of the parking area at, at, um, the, uh, city hall police department campus at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, upgrading the gym facility for the police department at fifteen thousand dollars. And mobile devices for social media, public outreach, um, at seven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, moving on to the city clerks department, uh, proposing the, let's see if I can say this word, digitization, uh, of the city's historical mandated microfilm, uh, system at twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, completing a council chambers audio and camera control upgrades at fifteen thousand dollars. Want to avoid some of those situations, situations we seem to encounter fairly regularly. Uh, remodeling of the council dais at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Uh, being on to the recreation division, uh, upgrading of the sound equipment for outdoor events at fifteen thousand. Uh, a membership-based workout facility here at the community center, uh, for twenty thousand. Uh, Ochoa Park irrigation sod landscape install, excuse me, installation at four hundred thousand. Uh, Dom Pedro Strawberry River Bluff Park, uh, trails and walkways at seventy-five thousand. Uh, River Bluff and Smyrna Park security cameras at twenty thousand. Uh, you'll see a trend here. We are proposing the installation of security cameras, license plate readers throughout the, throughout the city. Uh, we think that's a good investment with these funds. Uh, twenty thousand for that particular line item. Uh, River Bluff, uh, roading, Strawberry Park restroom upgrade grades at two hundred and fifty thousand. And a robot paint striper for the soccer fields at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, in the engineering public works area, uh, touchless crosswalk button at all intersections at four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, upgrading the traffic operations center equipment at a hundred thousand. Uh, downtown lighting phase two at six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, cleaning air ducts throughout city facilities at four hundred thousand. Uh, continuing that theme, replacing HVAC units in police and fire station one at sixty thousand. A fogger, another PPE, uh, at a cost of ten thousand. Uh, for the fire department, proposing to upgrade EMS equipment on fire engines at ninety thousand. Um, and then in the human resources department, uh, premium pay for eligible workers at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, COVID-related mandates, uh, helpline at a hundred and fifty thousand. We find ourselves spending a lot of time these days uh, bonding to, uh, COVID questions from our city employees. And, uh, temporary project management. Uh, there's a lot to do on this list. Um, and we think we may, we will need some outside resources to help us deliver, uh, many of these projects. So proposing uh, along, uh, along the line of council members, Mike Rhino's request some additional staff resources to, to help us deliver, again, these projects. Uh, reloading the Rad Card Program at two hundred thousand. Um, in terms of community and economic development, uh, a wayfinding sign program downtown. Um, as we heard from Opportunity Stanislaus, uh, potentially a, a business assistance program or incentive program at a hundred, hundred thousand. Uh, a sign to, to, to draw attention to the downtown. Um, at five thousand, um, and seasonal banners for the downtown decorative lights at twenty thousand. Uh, that concludes the list. Uh, we had a our amount, we, there was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars left that we hadn't, um, identified projects for. Um, we, I think, tried to show a little restraint, um, in our, our wish list. Um, but we, we do think this is a unique opportunity for the council and the community um, to really, uh, deliver some, some important projects and on some, uh, important things for the community. So with that, uh, staffs, uh, available for questions. Uh, putting together the list was a team effort, so, uh, in responding to council questions, I may turn at the various button heads. If there are specific questions regarding, so that concludes the presentation.
Now, I would, I'm hoping that everybody in the council has some questions and some suggestions and maybe we'll start with Casey. You have any? Okay, no problem. A council member, Rhino, if you want to touch bases on your original idea and questions. Now, as far as documenting some of these questions and idea from the council, are we going to have you, I guess, just basically write it down and then we'll get back? When we return, we'll, we'll have conversations about some of the direction. Go ahead, council member.
This would be, because we do know we have an issue with illegal dumps. And is it right that we're going, going to continue and pick them up? Unfortunately, we're gonna have to because who's gonna do it? People are not, are choosing to dump in our city and we don't have enough staff to go out and pick it up like we should. And I think if we're ever going to improve the aesthetics of our city, we need to start doing that. I'd like to know if, because we did do, um, we did not include the tree pruning grid in our budget. Is that something that could be added? That's something that could be paid out of ARPA funds? Ms. Diaz, yes? Okay, tree pruning grid, I think, would benefit a lot of people in the community. I think that's a good thing. Um, going through the list that staff recommended, I think there's a lot of good things, but I have to wonder if there are ongoing costs associated with any of these wants that they have. I mean, one of them would be, I can see just right off the bat is the landscape installation sod at Ochoa Park. I mean, I think that's wonderful, but who's gonna maintain it? We don't have any, we don't have enough staff now.
Nice. Uh, at length with Jeremy about that before the project, and he was completely satisfied that the maintenance of that park wouldn't be in any under pressure on their public works department before we even got to this point.
Well, if you drive around and look at our park, we don't and you ask people in the community who use the parks, they're not being maintained. And as a council member who has taken it upon herself, go and pull weeds out of the rose garden at Smyrna Park, as well as pull weeds at Sam Rhino Park, I can tell you we don't have enough staff to do it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I asked those questions of him too, and, and that, they designed that park with very little landscape, other trees and grass ultimately. And that was one of the reasons, because trees and grass takes so much less, um, maintenance. But I did ask those questions and we were looking at putting this on, on this list. So, I mean, I, it's in my district. Obviously, I want, I would love to see that park finished. But all those questions you have, I had gone over that pretty, pretty in depth with him and Tom West. This was actually a scaled down version of the five hundred and forty thousand originally that they thought it would be. Thanks.
Ms. Diaz, um, do you have an answer to that question? Do we have options on here that will require ongoing costs that will come out of our budget? Or would that be an individual department I would have to ask questions of?
Uh, yeah, that would come from each department head.
Okay. That would be a concern of mine before I could approve any of this. I would want to be sure that there would be no ongoing cost or if there were, what those ongoing costs would be. I would also like to see if there is some kind, I, I know a lot of small businesses may have been able to get grants or loan, loans through the, uh, some programs through the government. But I still would like to see if there's anything that we can offer our small businesses that have fought to stay afloat. I mean, it's been pretty rough on small businesses. And if there's something we can do to help them, I'd like to do that. And then, um, as far as spending four hundred thousand at Ochoa Park, is it something to look at? And I don't know if it's even feasible. I'm just throwing it out there. We've had Lyons Park that undeveloped in the north part of the town for, I don't know, fifteen years or something. And I'd like to know if instead of spending all that money on Ochoa Park, who, which has playground equipment and I think maybe volleyball, if we can do something at Lyons Park for, for the people that live in the community up there that have been waiting so long for their own park. And my last question would be for Ms. Diaz. We can spend ten million on governmental purposes, basically what we want done to our buildings or infrastructure. Can you tell us of the five point four eight seven, how, how much of that is towards the government or our own, our own buildings or whatever, not what, what, what else could be done with that?
Well, I, I have calculated, um, how much of all, of, all of this list of projects is, um, being used for the revenue loss category?
Okay.
That's, uh, three point six million dollars.
Three point six mil is revenue loss. Thank you. And then the seven hundred, if, I think it was seven hundred fifty thousand for the bonuses for the employee. Does that include what they've already received that?
And the second? That only includes what they've already received. Does not include the second installment.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I'm gonna, I have a list of a couple of items, but some of these coincide what we have already. I, I also support the funding of Guillermo Park. Uh, but also, uh, support the idea of, uh, improvements for, for River Bluff. Um, the stripes on our, our soccer fields and it also in, whether it's now, because we are left wanting three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe. Um, whether it's now or the next run, possibly lights and field improvements and nets. Something that we can consider, whether we wind up doing this now or next run. Um, also updating our park signs, missing logos. I know at Neil Park, there's a missing logo on the sign. Um, not a top priority, but at some point I would like to see a restroom at Neil Park. Uh, for recreation, this is, this is more of a, an idea, but it would probably require, um, some more looking into, uh, the reconstruction and renovating of the old park for a mixed-use sports complex. Uh, where the city of Syracuse could possibly run it, an indoor soccer field, uh, indoor flag football, indoor basketball courts. Uh, but obviously, that would require some kind of feasible, you know, um, looking into that. So that's one of them. And then, uh, as far as the wayfinding signs, I think we should expand it. I believe at each and every single exit that series residents, uh, get off on, they should, they should most definitely be able to know where, where Smyrna Park, CYB and River Bluff are. I think we should expand that program so that way they can find all the, all the great things that the city of series have to benefit and offer. And also replace old and outdated signs, such as the sign that's right there when we come from airport. That little small sign that we got there. I think that'd be something that we can all be behind. Um, and obviously there was a, a lot of requests to upgrade, uh, systems for the police department, but at some point I know that there's, it could be an opportunity to upgrade the fire alarm system at either the police department and or city hall. Um, and, and going to what, uh, Ms. Rhino and possibly Silveira, I, I don't know if there's a possibility where we can use, uh, one-time monies for code enforcement to bring on somebody under a temporary contract uh, staff, so we can increase our, our current new, uh, contractor to full status. That's something that the council would, would look into. Um, in addition, uh, I wanted to come up with some, uh, and, and some ideas on, to being proactive with COVID solutions. Uh, there's a, a COVID sanitation strategy through this current pandemic. Municipalities are now looking into more and effective and long-term solutions to address disinfection and throughout the city facilities. For example, there's a pure air shield UVC technology that offers the highest levels of COVID nineteen, proven to kill COVID nineteen viruses in under thirteen seconds. If that's something that we could look into that would possibly aid in some of our staff, uh, not saying that I, that I have all the scientific stuff. Uh, not saying that I, that I have all the scientific study whether or not that's gonna improve mitigating COVID nineteen in the city, but. I think it's worth looking into and then. Um, I can also provide you some resources to look into that information. Um, you know, when it comes down to test kits, you know, the United States government obviously has been offering. Citizens across the United States of COVID, COVID test kits, so I understand that they're hard to find and this is just strictly an idea. Um, I think that maybe we can use some of this money to facilitate some COVID tests to our, to our community. I understand that the county gives us some test kits and they're very limited. I had an opportunity to go out there and. And give test kits to a lot of folks and they're in desperate need to get tested so they can get back to work. So if we can maybe look into that and see what those costs would be, I think at the end of the day, we gotta look at all the costs of any of our suggestions and see if that. They're feasible and we're gonna have to make some decisions at our next meeting. Council member.
First of all, thank you, Alex, and everybody else who's been involved with this apartment heads. It's kind of fun to go to Home Depot shopping with somebody else's card. I appreciate all the work you guys have done on us. But we're about to make some super important decisions in our city and hire four department heads. I don't know if there's a more important thing that we have on the, and coming up in the near future. Um, I would love to see with, with a basic recruitment of a department head being about twenty-five thousand dollars nowadays. I would love to see a hundred thousand dollars put towards. HR and give the ability to create, uh, create really great positive. Recruitments for those apartment heads. Um, and get some assistance from. Wherever they gotta get to do that. And that's gonna take about a hundred thousand dollars. That's really the only thing I have to add and. Obviously, it's no secret that I, I would love to see that grass in Guillermo Choa Park. Thank you.
I would support that, council member.
Well, I, I would, I would, I would question the. Remodeling of the council chambers. Uh, that's why I would question, cause you know, maybe to me remodel would be just monitors here, so we're not looking up. There and spraining our neck with, with monitors here, we can look at directly. But you know, I would, I would question that where we can take the remainder of that money and, and put it towards parks where more people would, would. Would benefit from it. You had in there public safety cameras. You know, my question would be, how many public safety cameras are there? Portable ones, some, you know, we could take and, and put them in key locations and, and. Use them where need to, to get this illegal dumping and some of the other stuff under control. So, you know, maybe we could offset what. The council chambers thing and getting a couple more cameras to do. Me, I would question the premium pay for the employee one kind thing. You know, before I got on the council, they did that premium pay. And, and gave some out. Uh, I would say, you know, if we keep on just handing out money for pay. I know it's me, if you're gonna give it to me this year, I expect it next year. I want it the year after. You know, we could probably use it to, to utilize things like. Was, was conveyed down on the, on the diocese for small business help. To, to get some of these businesses relief. You know, we, uh. Already gave our employees a, a benefit of the doubt, you know, six months ago. With some things, so we need to share that with small businesses or business, local business owners that, that hey, we're here for you. You know, so, you know, I would question that. Uh, I would like to also see, you know, where we can get. Temporary code enforcement to help clean up. You know, what needs to be done and, and get that. So, uh, I will commend the staff and Alex. Because I think we're going in the right direction. You gave us a lot to turn around and, and think about and think outside the box. You know. I think that. We're gonna be part of the solution instead of the problem. Well, I thank you for, you know, getting us that step so we can help you take it to another step.
Thank you, council member. Appreciate that. Is there any, any kind of a, okay, so would you like to add some? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I think it's important. Have more public input. The Lion Park that the council person Rhino brought up. My son lives in that neighborhood, but actually it's in my district. And actually has lived there almost eighteen years. And. I guess I'm, I'm embarrassed that Linda brought it up. You know, there's, there's plenty of. Needs in our community. And one of the issues that. Pretty common here since I've been involved in the political side of it. We have very few people, both Zoom and in present, that give us any input. And I, I wonder if the reason that is. Is because they think we're not listening. This money came from them. Uh, through our federal government. And I think that they should have an opportunity. I, I realize it might delay things, but I think it's important. That we have, give them the opportunity. It's kind of like the veteran thing, you know? Uh, I, I was in hopes that by postponing it, going to the different. Those veterans meetings that we would get some people, but maybe. They, they meaning the general pub. Feel like what good does it do? We're not listening to them. That, that's all I. Is I think that the public needs to have an opportunity. Say what, you know, what, but they might think is priority. I think this is a good outline for them to follow. Uh, and maybe move things around. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member. Before we move on, speaking of the public, if there's any public members that would like to speak on this matter, offering input?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Warren, City of Series. I think. One of my concerns has been answered. There are some funds for the, uh, the camera system for in and around the, the city of series. I think a mixture of permanent cameras as well as some portable ones. That could be moved around for the needs of the city and law enforcement. We all hate to have big brothers spying on us, but pretty much anywhere you go today. You're being monitored by a camera someplace, whether it's on a neighbor's house in your, on the street you live on. Or if it's in the parking lot of Walmart. If folks out there don't realize they're being monitored constantly, they're probably sleeping. So I would think a system that allows feed into our dispatch center. So our dispatch center people can monitor cameras throughout the city. That are positioned to, you know. Uh, see what's going on and, and provide assistance to law enforcement for their actions. And dispatchers won't be able to monitor them twenty-four seven, but the, uh, the volunteer program that the police department is. Working with, the, uh, the volunteers in police service. Some of those gentlemen and ladies can spend some time quite possibly monitoring these systems that would be in place. And maybe catch someone doing it while they're doing it, rather than going back later and knocking on their door saying that. That you were, we, we found out that you did this. So it, it's just a suggestion. I don't know the cost of that. I see a hundred thousand dollars was in the budget. Maybe it'll take a little bit more, maybe it might not take as much, and maybe it can be integrated into the system the city already has. But that would be my suggestion. There's, there's other line items, but there'll be some discussion on that in, in, in the future. Thank you very much.
And I, I believe if I'm mistaken, chief. There is a combination of that already, right, that we can soon implement soon as those, if that gets approved, correct?
Yeah, we had a local vendor give us a presentation about three and a half years ago. And we have another meeting scheduled for February seventh. I just need to iron out a time. Sit down with them and see what their updated technology have to offer. And it will be a combination of fixed and portable cameras. We'll also. Figure out what the cost is going to be and if we can use this ARPA fund to pay for services. At one time to expend that money so we don't have to keep track of it, but we can iron all those things out on February seventh.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, John Warren. Is there anybody on Zoom with the, I do see one hand raised on Zoom?
EX Gaming, I will unmute your mic.
Thank you. Um, well, I can say that I. Don't agree with the remodeling, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that what you said it would cost to remodel on? Your area there. Um, I don't agree with that. Um, I believe we could probably get some. Something extra like for, for the public, more chairs, maybe stuff like that, but, um. That's just too much money there, a hundred and fifty. We should probably put that money towards something else like helping small businesses or. The parks, Smyrna Park, that's a, a very popular park here in our area. Um, we should invest in parks. Uh, I just don't agree with that remodeling. And the enforcement, temporary help for code enforcement. I, I do see a lot of dumping in a lot of areas and it just stays there and it stays there, especially on El Camino, right by the freeway in that area. And I'm not sure why. They're not enforcing cleanup there. It's always there. I mean, do we have, what, what do we have to do as citizens? Do we have to actually call the city and report it for it to get cleaned up? That's my question. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Yeah, you know, if you see it, go ahead and report it. And sometimes when it involves a, a county pocket, we have to get the county involved or if it's. Alongside of the freeway on the fence, we gotta get Caltrans involved. So there's, there's a couple of things that we have to work with and navigate through, but most definitely, please report it. So, um, Alex, so you can jump in on this, but so the best thing I would imagine city council, if we put our, our, our ideas together. And at maybe, I know it's a little bit of extra work, but, uh. You know, come up with some numbers too, right? So that way we can have a further discussion at the next meeting and. Possibly make a decision then, right?
Right, I, I, the, the, the recommendation was direction or discussion. Um, and as the staff would bring, bring back a spending plan the next meeting. I think we could still do that. We could certainly address. The issue of ongoing maintenance costs as part of, as part of that. Agenda item would bring back to the council and that is important to understand what those ongoing costs could potentially be. So yes, we could still, I think, based on. On the discussion, bring back a spending plan. And discuss those maintenance costs. Let's shoot for that next meeting, February meeting. Might take a little bit of time to, to develop some of those maintenance costs, but we will certainly. Certainly, excuse me, shoot for the February.
But would you like the council to email you some of these ideas, being that some of us had it on paper? I wasn't sure what the best way to do about it. Or do you guys have it on record? You guys can.
I, I think between my notes, the, the clerk's recording, the, the tape of the meeting. I think, I think we have the essence of the discussion.
I just wanna make sure that everybody gets heard here at the city council, so. Okay, sounds good. So there, there is, there's nothing, there's no other action besides that, correct?
Uh, no, not this evening, mayor. Again, just, just wanted some discussion and, and direction from the council and I. I think we got that this evening.
Sounds good. I believe Councilman Brian has a question.
I, I know we have a lot of additional wants that we brought up, so. If those are all gonna be addressed, it may not be able to make it for February eighth, because I know the things the mayor brought up was. Possibly looking at. Making the old Walmart into a, the indoor facility, so that's gonna, I think, take some time to. See what that could potentially cause. I mean, just ballpark figures and everything, but you know, like. I brought up about Lions Park and, you know, even just going with the basic kind of. Play structures and if they had to be some, you know, basically what they did at Guillermo Choa Park. Just to give us some idea of what those costs be.
Right, I, I, I think between our project management staff or capital project management staff, we could. Fairly short order. I, I don't wanna create an unful expectation, but I think we, we will shoot for the February meeting. Um, if we need to postpone that, I think as long as the council's okay with that. Back that second meeting in February.
Yeah, sounds great to me. Any more questions? Okay, moving on. Is there any council member referrals?
Thank you very much.
I believe, uh, thank you very much, Alex. Sorry about that. Go ahead, council member Casey. I've known what, uh, as long as there's no referrals, we're moving on to reports. I have no reports. Do you have no referral? Okay, I have no reports. The city council, do you have any report? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to, uh, do a Zoom meeting with homeless. Program in our county. I was somewhat disappointed. I didn't have any information for our city. Patterson and Riverbank and Oakdale. All smaller cities than us, they have some bigger programs, but I also was surprised and delighted to know that. Uh, here at our school system. I think, can't think of the name, the past superintendent school over here on. Adjacent to Central Valley, that we have the YES program. It's a program designed to help. Uh, stop, I guess, future homeless people. It's designed as a program to help young people. Get their GED, help them find jobs. Kind of tied into what. Opportunity Stanislas was talking about and I asked what we could do. The city and, and his answer was pretty simple. Encourage employer to contact them. And they need to find jobs, these people, and they'll take it from there. So it's, uh, it's called. Project YES, they have a webpage and. The project manager is Dustin Pack. And I have his phone number and I, I hope to have more information at a future meeting. We can, that we can put out to the public. Again, all they're looking for is. Employers that give some young people a chance to get a job. His phone number is eight seven two six four oh seven. And again, I hope to have more information at our next meeting and thank you for pointing me to that committee.
No problem, council member, and that is a great project.
I think I just need clarification. City manager mentioned February the eighth. But we don't really meet until February fourteenth, correct? Or do we have a meeting that I don't have agenda? I mean, it might be me, it might be me, but I thought our next one was Valentine's Day.
For some, for some reason, I looked and wrote down February eighth. I could have misspoken. Maybe the clerk can confirm when our next meeting is. I apparently still haven't figured that out.
No, that's fine.
Oh, there's one on the fourteenth and one on the twenty-eighth. Okay, all right, thank you.
No, that, that's all right. I could have misunderstood.
Thank you, council member. Any reports from council, my client?
Yeah, I, uh, I don't believe I'll be here on February twenty-eighth. Uh, I'm leaving on vacation for a couple of weeks. And the second thing is, I hate to take somebody's thunder, but I'm gonna do it anyway. You know, uh, Chief Weiss or Deputy Chief. Or, or however we're gonna address you. Welcome back.
Welcome back, chief. All right. City manager?
Nothing this evening, man.
City attorney? Apartments?
Yes. Mayor, council, all of you are aware of the critical incident that happened Saturday, last Saturday night. Happy to report that the officer is recovering extremely well. Been released. And I would like to commend the entire police department for the excellent work that they did. In that moment, it happened really quickly. Everybody mobilized without even being asked. People were on their days off and volunteered to come in. Obviously, they're gonna get paid, but.
Obviously, they're going to get paid, but it was all hands on deck and nobody hesitated to come in and do what needed to be done to see the resolution of that incident. Very scary incident. I won't get into details about it because there's an ongoing investigation. The point is that the officer is okay. Everybody involved, it's okay. I'd also like to publicly thank the Stanislaw County Sheriff's Department. They gave their crime scene tech team to us to process that scene. The Modesto Police Department allowed a couple cadets to pull traffic while we did what we had to do. So it was a real team effort. That's what I love about this county is that all the allied agencies in here work very well together. And I'm proud to be a part of that. Secondly, we've had an illegal dump problem at Whitmore and Rose quite some time. I'm happy to report tonight that we have a camera installed at that intersection. Have the ability to monitor that 24 hours a day. Get our code enforcement officers trained to monitor that as well. And we look to add more to that because we have problems everywhere. We hear it all the time. We have a major illegal dumping problem. We're going to bring in technology. Hopefully, we can get some personnel to address this in the future. But that is a step in the right direction. To thank Sam and his staff for aiding us and getting that up there quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Allen Earth Fire Chief and Councilmember Klein did steal my thunder. I did want to introduce Deputy Chief Kevin Weiss. He is a familiar face here in Series as a past fire chief, but we're very lucky and fortunate to have him on the Modesto Fire Department. And I'd like to take some credit, but we, we know his talents and his strengths and we know his expertise here in Series. So one of his primary roles and responsibilities will be serving the City of Series as part of our contract and assisting me with the other contracts as well. So I wanted to say, introduce you to him and welcome him back to the county and City of Series and Modesto Fire Department. Then the other item, I just wanted to quickly brief you on is the critical incident we've been dealing with all day. We had a commercial structure fire at, off of Service Road to Stanislaw Food, or Stanislaw Farm Supply, where we had a warehouse that was containing several hundred, if not thousand, tons of mix between sulfur and fertilizer. And when we heard the dispatch, it's one of those dispatches that's one of the, it's a worst fear of a fire chief and a firefighter responding to that type of incident. We've seen the horrific videos throughout the country where those have been catastrophic. And I want to thank all those involved, the chief and the Series Police Department, their staff with assisting us with traffic control, advising in the community. One of the, one of the primary priorities of the incident was to ensure that we established a safe zone around the incident and protected the community as best as possible. Very proud of the partnerships that we've established with our hazmat team, the county DER, again, the police department and other resources that came in throughout the county to assist us on the incident. I am pleased to report right now that the incident has been somewhat neutralized. The fire is contained to, it's still burning in some product. There's still a threat, but we were able to mitigate the toxic hazard of the environment. And so we were able to lift, we put a one mile radius of what we call shelter in place, kept the residents indoors, turn off their AC units to try to keep them as safe as possible. And we were doing air monitoring throughout the incident around the community and we never really had anything that gave us cause for concern, but we wanted to make sure that those precautions were set in place. So I do anticipate we'll be on scene throughout the night, if not probably majority of tomorrow as well. But for the most part, the incident is stable and the majority of the fire resources have cleared. And we'll have some remaining staff on scene assisting with the, the operational staff of the facility. But a very scary incident, but one that I'm proud with the level of response and the partnerships we had to safely mitigate it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for chit. More department heads. Moving on to county supervisor, I believe this office has his hands raised on Zoom.
County Supervisor funded, I will unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Russell Fowler from the Office of Supervisor, Chance Condit. Supervisor can't be with you tonight. He has another commitment, but happy to join you on his behalf. Don't have much to report out tonight. Just wanted to sit and observe and wanted to say Supervisor looks forward to the State of the City address later this week. With that being said, I'm happy to take any comments, questions or concerns.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? No, Russ, no comments or questions. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, so we will now adjourn this meeting and go into a closed session for a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation and city labor negotiator. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to this closed session, being none, thank you very much. And after the closed session, we will report out, everybody.